Call the meeting to order.
The recording has started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, this is a, the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to review, uh, the non-reoccurring list and the capital plan. And I am going to, um, to turn it over to Jared Smith, who is going to share documents, uh, on the screen of the non-reoccurring list. I just want to, um, say that I want to thank, uh, Selectman Flynn for his work on this, um, with our, uh, team and myself to ensure that we, you know, we had a good, solid list so that we can have a planning document going forward for the town of Fairfield, similar to what I, uh, we did, uh, with the Board of Ed years ago, where there's a long-range plan and everyone knows what's coming up. And so I just really want to, uh, thank you, Tom, for your hard work and your diligence on this. It's much appreciated.
Everybody see that?
Yes, thank you.
Want me to blow it up a little bit?
Yep, I got some old eyes here.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry. Yeah, you didn't hear me before. First of all, before you go on, Jared, I was saying, uh, thank you to yourself, to Connie, to Tom Bremer, and to the department heads for all their hard work on this. Uh, we really tried to change the mindset of the department heads from past practice to get a fulsome list put together here, uh, so that we provided some context to the, um, projects that you put forward. So I appreciate all the time and effort that all of you did and the hard work. Uh, so thank you.
Sure, thank you. All right. So I'm gonna lead off with this very high-level, uh, sheet that shows the Board of Education, the town, WPCF, and then a, a grand total. And what the, what these numbers reflect is the, uh, the amount that we would plan to bond in, uh, in each of these years. So when we went through the, we were going through the capital planning process and the capital workshop, uh, as we were going through, a lot of the projects ended up being on the front end of this, uh, the first four or five years. And so we've been spending a bit of time to, to smooth this out and to, uh, get these costs, uh, get the bonding out, uh, over a 10-year period in a much more even way, uh, with the goal being, uh, not to exceed $30 million in bonding each year, which I'll, I'll talk about in a minute and why that, uh, why that number matters. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll get into the details of the non-recurring projects in a bit and as well as a couple of the capital projects have resolutions related to them. But, uh, for now, I, I think the things that I really want to point out on he, on this document are, you know, out into the future, well, let me, uh, back up, start earlier. Uh, in '21, you see the amount of 31 million and change, goes up to 27, uh, then 22, and then it starts to increase, uh, pretty drastically after that. Uh, the, the reason for that is this, uh, WPCF, uh, investment in renovation in the facility there. Uh, this is gonna take probably somewhere in the area of, uh, $70 million to, to do. Um, there, as of right now, the way it's reflected on here, the cost would be absorbed by taxpayers. But, uh, I think over the next, uh, months and year, and year or so, we will look at a way to maybe, uh, distribute the, the costs of this differently so that the, uh, ratepayers of WPCF pick up some of this as well and not just the general taxpayers. But again, I just wanted to point that out. It's not anything that we're dealing with today, but, uh, you know, wanted to, if you see that and you see these large increases, that's why. Uh, on the town side, uh, you get a sense of, we, there was a, an active, uh, effort to try to increase the, uh, the investment on the town side, uh, due to the age of buildings and, uh, in some, in some ways, uh, in some areas, there was a, a lack in investment in the past. So we've tried to change that pattern a bit. The, again, I'm not gonna go through all the details of this, but this is the non-recurring list. We will, the department heads will go through their projects that are, uh, up for action today. So I, I won't go through all the details of this, but if you're, when you look at your documents, you can get a sense of, uh, the timing of, of these investments as well. And then this is the capital list, and there will be a couple of capital items on, uh, up for action today.
Hey, Jared?
Yeah?
I got a question. Is that okay?
Sure.
So if I look at your grand total of cash required, right? Projected, uh, cash required, you're at $31,256 for the year for 2021. 27,805 for 21, 22, is that right?
Yep. Yes.
So if I go to your schedule that shows percentage of budget for the year?
Yes.
I'm not finding those figures.
So, I'm actually having trouble reading this. So what, this, is, are you looking at this sheet that I have up now?
I am.
Okay, this is debt service. This refle, reflects debt service, not the investment each year.
Right. So this is debt service. Does this take into consideration the numbers you have here? They've been updated for that. That's what I want to know.
Yeah, so that's a good question. What we, what we did for, um, the waterfall and the, what this debt service amount is tied to is a maximum of $30 million a year.
Right.
Flat $30 million a year. So that, that, that amount that we could potentially issue, it does not tie directly and exactly to the amount of cash need, uh, you know, to give us some flexibility over the years.
Right.
But this, this, this is really a, uh, I get, you know, from a financial standpoint, a worst-case scenario if we were to issue $30 million a year.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were, what about the years where you have to issue like 36 and 33? And you have one year in there for 25, that's 49 or 50?
So we'll, you know, and in those years, when we look for the, uh, for the authorization, we'll, we'll reevaluate each of those years and, you know, because those are a few years down the line and we'll, we'll reevaluate at that time. And, uh, you know, we'll, again, we'll, we'll make it so that it's somewhere near $30 million and we will, we will not issue more than $30 million.
Right. The big drivers in those years appear to be, as you mentioned before, WPCA, right?
That's right.
So what's gonna happen there is you're gonna have to hit, in '25, '26, you're really gonna have to reel in. '23, '24, '25, '26, you're gonna have to reel in the town because the other side of those big investments is the town.
Yeah, I think it'll be a combination of that. Um, you know, we're gonna, we'll be looking for other, um, you know, non-bonded, uh, sources too. If we, uh, you know, not that, not that we're gonna base a plan on hope, but we will be, we'll be looking for other sources. If the federal government comes out with an infrastructure plan, maybe that becomes a source. Um, but, you know, it's a few years out, so we will have to, we'll have to, uh, reevaluate if that's the case. If it ends up being, uh, you know, a significant amount like that, then yeah, we'll have to take a look at the town side and then again, also, also look into the idea of the WPCA ratepayers picking up a portion of it in addition to the general town taxpayers.
Well, no, even if they do that, it still goes through bonding. It still goes the full faith and credit of the town. And it's just a funding mechanism to pay back those bonds. But in order to affect this, you'd still have to issue the bonds.
Right. It's, it, I mean, we, we still would, uh, you're, you're right in terms of the, the, um, yeah, I guess the way that the rating agencies will look at it and also, uh,
Yeah.
and also what it does to our overall debt. Um, but in terms of the way, the source of the funding, that would be different.
That's right.
Any other questions there?
No, thank you for explaining. I just, I just think we need to be cognizant of that because I, and again, since last time we did this, since we put this all together, uh, you've, you've changed the, the funds flow for the number of years out, um, because of what you got back from the Board of Ed and et cetera. But it, it is, we do have pinch points coming up in '23 through '26 that we need to be cognizant of. That's all.
Yep.
And if I were to make any comment on top of that, it's this idea of, and again, just more of a, an observation of, you know, the kicking, the can down the road mentality and, and saying that you don't want to base things on hope. But what would other instruments, for instance, you said, if the federal government, what are other ways in which might be a, a way to plan ahead? Because planning with hope is, is one thing, but are there real other ways that we could make this feel more secure for down the line? Or is this just how it is?
Yeah, so, uh, we're gonna, as I said, these are gonna be things that we'll have to research. I don't, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Marsilio's here. I don't know if you have any, any thoughts on this or any, uh, experience with other types, other sources of funding that might be helpful.
Well, this Clean Water Act funding that, uh, you're eligible for always, but it's still on your books. It doesn't make any of the borrowing go away. I don't know if there'll be, uh, infrastructure money available for water treatment. Um, you never know what's in the packages, but, uh, from what I'm hearing, it's, it's, they're gonna focus on transportation. So, uh, you know, that kinda limits your sources of revenue. It's a policy decision. And other WPCAs that I've been involved with and, uh, you know, they're enterprise funds and, and although the bonding goes to the full faith and credit of the entity where it resides, uh, all WPCA, uh, funding, uh, would be borne by the users.
Doesn't matter. And that's a town decision. It doesn't matter. It's where the bonding comes from.
Correct. And I prefaced it by saying it's a policy.
Yep.
So, uh, it's just another source of revenue to, to.
Yeah, but, right, but for, we're not, you're right, and I'm, and I apologize. We're not talking about the revenue side. We're talking about the bonding side. And regardless of how we pay for it, this would be part of the bonding side of it. And the issue, you're, I'm sure you're right with the funds too. Typically, my experience, and maybe I'm wrong on this, the way that works though is we would still have to probably go out, expend the funds in the years here, is I'm assuming what this plays out as, and then apply, put the application in to get the funds back from the federal government and maybe receive those funds to help pay down the debt in subsequent years, which is still a great funding source, but it is the timing issue there, at least is what I remember happening previously.
Right. So we would have to come up with the cash to.
Exactly.
Do that. Yep.
Yeah. That's, and I'm not disagreeing on the whole conversation related to how this gets paid for. It's all about when we have to put out the bonds though and get the money done, get the money out there.
Yep. All right. Uh, let's see. So, and just so, Mr. Flynn, I know you're aware of this and, uh, this was presented to the, to the Board of Finance, but, you know, the, the $30 million number came from, uh, an analysis that we asked our, our financial advisor to do, which was, uh, basically a, a capacity analysis to say.
Yep.
If, if we wanted to keep our debt service at a level that was approximately 8.45% of our overall spending, how much, uh, you know, if you were to flatten it out and smooth it out, how much would be, we be allowed to borrow each year? And that number was 30 million. So that's, that's where that number comes from. And again, it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, a threshold. It's a landmark number, uh, to look at. It gets, it'll get adjusted and, um, and, and most years we may not even hit it.
What I like about it is it keeps us well below that 10% marker of the budget, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gives us that cushion and, yep. This is the, this is the, the waterfall, uh, just showing the debt service payments.
Yep.
Uh, year, year by year. And I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk too much about that. Uh, this is the W, so this is the WPCA schedule of, uh, their non-recurring and also their, their capital, which is just, uh, this is the detail related to what was reflected in the first sheet.
Yep.
Uh, Board of Education. Uh, I, I got, I have one other document that I want to share with you that didn't make it into here and was a late add to the, um, Board of Finance. But, um, you know, it's, and it kinda ties into what we were just talking about as far as sources. So I wanted to do a, a five-year, uh, capital plan, which typically what, mostly what we've seen, um, in Fairfield is just how much you're bonding and then, you know, a little offset of whatever the reimbursement might be from it. So this, this breaks it out and, uh, shows, okay, how much is coming from town geo-bond? And then what are some of the other sources of funding that, that could be used? Um, and that we're projecting to use for, for these projects. So that's what this, this chart is. And, you know, we can add columns. For example, if, if there were another, uh, federal program that, that started, we can add a column in there and, and reflect that. So you can see the overall investment each year. You'll see the amount the town puts in, but then you can add to that the other sources, um, by source. So it's just, uh, you know, and we can see where, maybe where we're light or maybe where there's some other opportunities and, uh, pursue it. So I just, I wanted to put that before you. It doesn't, doesn't change anything about what you're voting on. It's just another, uh, another way to look at this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, and that's, that's all I have for this, uh, this present, this overview of the 10-year plan. I don't know if there's any questions from the board.
The one thing I want to know is, is everything we're being asked to approve today fully accounted for in this plan that you've put before us?
Yes.
Okay. So we can be assured that everything we voted on today is part of the capital plan that we reviewed overall. And, and that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Right, Tom, uh, Tom, I just want to say for, just for the record, that, you know, that's barring any things that come up that need attention, obviously.
Oh, sure.
And in the fact that we're doing that, um, planning of our assessments of our buildings, who, who knows what that's gonna.
Well, that's, and that's why I was.
You know, we'll probably have to, you know, come back together with you and, and the team again, um, once that assessment is done to plug in things. And who knows? We might move things around if we see there's a, you know, big, uh, situation or health or safety problem. But, um, I think this is a fair blueprint, um, that gives everyone some, you know, confidence in what's happening, what our needs are, and, um, um, a planning document going forward.
Sure, there's a couple of points of that. Yes, I was only actually referring to the items we were being asked to approve today. You're absolutely right. Some other items may shift. And, and one of the things I do like about what, uh, Jared has put together here is even at this level, we've come up to that 8.45% of operating budget, which gives us about a point and a half of room, uh, as compared to that magic 10% that you don't want to go above your operating budget by 10%. So, um, should something come up unexpectedly, or should, you're absolutely right, Madam for Selectwoman, uh, should, um, you know, the review of the town buildings find something critical, we do have a little bit of headroom there to not go up to the 10% as well as, as you, as you correctly point out. Um, there is most definitely gonna be a reshuffling of the, of the deck as regards projects as we go out a little bit further. So I couldn't agree more.
Thank you. Nancy, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I've been listening. I had a discussion over the weekend with, um, Mr. Marsilio and I have educated myself, so I think I'm good. And I have listened into Tom's questions and the subsequent answers, so I'm good.
All right, thank you. Um, so if there's no other questions regarding this item, I'm going to, uh, are we voting?
No.
No.
Not yet.
Uh, I want to go to, uh, item number four. Angeles Papa George is here with Christine Vitale, the Chairwoman of the Board of Education and the Superintendent, oh, the Superintendent was unable to be on the call, uh, to hear and discuss the Board of Education's 10-year capital plan including specific capital and non-reoccurring capital projects. And I'm gonna hand it over to you, Angeles.
Do you want to take that down now?
Yeah, Angeles, do you want me to stop sharing this one? Do you have something you want to share?
Are you sure he's on the call?
Just take it down so I can see if he's there.
Um, I don't see him. And I don't see the Chairwoman either. Um.
We're not being asked to approve anything today relative to this, correct?
Uh, I don't believe so.
No.
Um.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. Um, can you ask Jen to reach out to Angeles and see why he's not on the call?
All right, well, then we're gonna move, um, ahead and see if we can find out where they are. Um, item number five, Jared Schmidt and, uh, our, our attorney John Stastrom and Anthony Calabrese are here for non-reoccurring, um, this not, number five. 10 years required Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $150,000 for the cost of certain non-reoccurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such approchi, appropriation. I'm gonna hand it over to, to Jared.
Sure. I don't have much to add to that. I will let, uh, Anthony, uh, talk about the, the details of it, but this is a 10-year bond, uh, and the only item on our 10-year bond resolution, uh, which is for a master plan for Department of, uh, yes. For, for Recreation. Thank you. If I can find the document here, I will pull it up. Anthony, you want to get, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm on. Definitely handle it. Um, so yeah, we're looking to, uh, put out the RFP, a, um, bid for a master plan. Essentially, um, this plan would have a vendor come in, uh, give an unbiased opinion of our facilities, the current conditions they're in. Uh, this includes about 1,200 acres of park space, um, open space, school properties that we use fields, um, at right now, our playground system, pretty much the whole thing. Um, and again, this would let up capital projects for us, um, over the next 10 years or so, um, where we need to invest money, where we have areas, uh, for improvement. Happy to answer any questions if there are.
Anthony, it's Tom. How are you?
I'm doing well, Tom. Thank you.
Good. So quick question. Um, how often do we need to do these projects, uh, do a plan like this? And why do we need to outsource this?
Uh, well, this plan typically is something that's done over, um, a 15- to 20-year period. I can't find the last time the town of Fairfield did one specific to parks and recreate. Um, it's important to, to bring in an unbiased vendor to do this, uh, essentially so there's no pet projects in this. Um, if my, for example, um, you know, if my children were into, uh, football, I may, as the director, want to push that we improve our, our football, uh, complex. Um, where an unbiased person would come in and tell you, nope, your football complex is, uh, perfectly, uh, fine the way it is, you really should be, you know, expanding your softball complex or whatever, whatever the case is. Or they could come in and say, you know, majority of your facilities are, are in great shape. There's just some handicapped accessibility that needs to be added to certain areas.
How do you go about finding a group that does this for us?
Uh, well, we would put it out to, to bid. Again, I based my number off of a quote that I was given from a company called Weston and Sampson, um, who does this regularly. They just recently did, uh, the town of Darien. Um, there's some other towns that they've, they've done in the state, but Darien's their most recent one that I was aware of. Um, I'm friendly with their, their staff down there and they were very pleased with the interaction that they had with them, um, and, you know, the inputs they got from all stakeholders involved. Cause it, there, this would involve, it's probably about a year process to get the whole, uh, report done.
And what does the deliverable look like, Anthony? Like, what can we expect? Hello?
I think he got cut off.
Convenient timing.
Anthony, can you hear us? Yeah, he's, he's got that yellow internet thing going on there.
Maybe the first thing they're gonna say in this facility's plan is he should upgrade his internet.
There you go.
There you go. So talk, so Anthony, um, what does the deliverable look like? What does the report look like at the end of this? Yeah, you're, I, I hear you talking, but nothing's coming out.
Yeah, eventually I'll figure out how to use technology, you know? Rough over.
There you go.
I, I apologize, Tom.
No problem.
The deliverable is about a hundred-page document that will lay out all the different, uh, facilities, what they need and really in a priority list, um, from what needs attention first to things that, you know, down the road, you know, probably don't need to be taught. Um.
Will it, will it lay out some, some potential costs to these items?
They, they do their best to put, um, approximate figures on those items.
Right. And then we would go and then bake that into a further capital plan moving forward, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do they interview, is this for, um, increasing your level of service or maintaining your level of service?
Um, it would, we would look to increase. Um, primarily, one of, one of the things I would ask them to do is to say, where can we improve? What can we enhance? Um, doesn't mean we have to take every recommendation they make, you know, in, into consideration. There could be things that we say, you know what? No, that, that we don't want to expand the marina or whatever.
Yeah, I would, I would ask that in this report, when you give them kind of their marching orders, that they really bucketize it in two ways. The first way being, you know, maintenance projects to if you have an existing playground, you need to replace it, you know, something of that sort. And then, um, you know, enhancements, so that we can view each of those, uh, given you were on and just saw what Jared was presenting as regards, you know, the long-term capital plans and the needs. So I would, I would really like to say, you know, i, if, if we want to hold, hold serve right now, um, this is what we need to do. If we want to hold yet, try to improve, you know, this plus this is what we need to do. So, um, both the park and rec. So both the park and rec commission, as well as the town bodies that approve the spending, can review that, if you don't mind.
Understood.
All right. And why is 10 years the right time period to bond this? And this is the only thing over 10 years, Jared?
This is, that's correct. This is the only item over 10 years.
So am I to see that this is, in 10 years, you're going to do another one of these, Anthony? Is that kind of the cadence here?
It's rough, again, I would say anywhere between 10 to 15 years that you typically would refresh these. You could probably drag it out to, you know, that 15-year mark, but it definitely isn't a 20-year. You don't want a 20-year gap in between plan.
Understood.
So that was why I asked Finance to classify it as a 10-year as opposed to a 20-year bond.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions on this item?
No, I'm set. Thank you. Thanks, Anthony.
All right, so if there's no other questions or comments, this is a voting item. All in favor, can I get a motion to approve? Sorry.
So moved.
Seconded.
And no discussion, I see, so all in favor.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask one question? My apologies. Mr. Sastrom is on, correct?
He is, Mr. Flynn.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. I can't let you get away without talking.
That's fine.
Question for you. You looked at this bond, your, or all the language here, is there anything we should be concerned about? Anything you think we should change, or anything out of the ordinary?
No, there's nothing out of the ordinary. We have a number of clients who do these kind of surveys periodically. And obviously, this will sometimes lead to future capital programs related to your parks or other recreation facilities. So we're comfortable that a 10-year bond on this is appropriate.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. My apologies, Madam First Select Woman. I'm okay to proceed here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. I just was alerted, if you want to pull that down now, that Angeles is on the line. They thought, he thought the meeting was at four, didn't realize we had moved it up. So Angeles, I'm going to, we're going back to item number four, and I'm going to hand it over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for that. I did not realize we had pushed, you guys had pushed it up a half hour. I do appreciate it, though. I think, so to review the waterfall chart that you have before you, I just want to go through it real quickly. You'll see that there's been a lot of changes done to it. In thinking that there's a lot of changes done to it, and I apologize, I had a slide presentation, which for some glitching reason, my computer has crashed on me today. So I'm just going to kind of go through without the slides I had. But just so you know, so what we did here with the waterfall is we've identified some continuing initiatives that we feel that we still need to leave on the waterfall and we still need to move forwards with. But we've also identified some new initiatives that we believe we have to, can start moving forwards with, such as infrastructure, boilers, that type of equipment, BMS control systems. So that's what you're really seeing there. Security infrastructure is a continued initiative, and a continued initiative and also a new initiative. So it's something we're going to continue to move forwards with, working with the police department. You will also see in there that one of the placeholders we have in there is for air conditioning of the high, one of the high schools down the road, and then the other one even further down the road. At this point, I just want to make it clear that those are actually placeholders based on the current information we have. But as I'm sure you guys are aware, we have an RFP out for an engineering to lock up and give us even better numbers, which we will continue to upgrade, update the waterfall once those become more available. But the number in there was given to us by an engineer who said it was a safe placeholder at this point. Another thing to keep in mind also is that projects on the waterfall, we worked with multiple companies and engineers to get the numbers that you see on the waterfall. If for some reason a project was not quoted or given a number for the specific year in the waterfall, and it was done for this particular year, we use a 3% escalator to move it out to the proper year that it should be in. Normally, I would go through the pages of detail and look at all the changes, but I think there's just so many of them. I don't want to keep you guys down with that unless it's something you're interested in.
I want to thank you, first of all, for the time that you spent with me, kind of walking me through some of these changes previously. I think maybe if you could highlight a couple of the big items that changed, some of the big dollar ones, that'd be most appropriate so that nobody can say they were surprised by those. In addition, I'll have a follow-up question too, so thank you.
Absolutely. So a couple, well, a couple of things you'll see on there that you would not have seen in the past on there with your new initiatives are our boilers, our elevator systems, are a couple, just the name. One of the big ticket items on there that you'll see is a large number is the Dwight renovation project. Went up to a $30 million project. And again, that was working with some engineers and taking into account the current building conditions and some of the concerns with the building, to give it a better number as to what it would be to completely either revamp that building. And actually, at this point, we're also looking at if it might be the better option to do a complete teardown and rebuild of that building. So we didn't want that to come up all of a sudden as a huge number and not on the waterfall. We wanted to put it out there and make everyone aware of it. So again, we're not trying to shock people with numbers, but we want to give as realistic numbers as we could in the waterfall. We also carried out the roof plan, so you'll see the roofing, just, it was just over the next couple of years, but we carried out the roofs through the district so that you'll see there's a full report on the waterfall now. So those are a couple of the big ticket items that you'll see on there. Again, the air conditioning, as I mentioned, that's out a few years, but that's also on there as a big ticket item. I was just looking through, I think I hit the big ticket items that you'll see on there. I also, as Mr. Flynn said, I did share with him, and I also shared it with the town CFO, and we've gone through it, and we've looked at numbers to make sure we fall within the town's facilities and waterfall plan.
Yeah, I was just saying I was on mute. You did move some projects out to the future to kind of smooth the financial implications in any given year, is that correct?
Not only did we move some out to smooth out the numbers and the big ticket items, but we also identified some projects on the waterfall that we felt would fit better into an operating budget. So we've actually removed some projects as well.
Can you give a couple of examples of that, just so that we're aware?
Well, actually, no, you know what, I'm going to apologize and step back on that, because the draft that you saw didn't have those projects. We had a bunch of projects that were on there, and then we removed them off. But you'll see on there, some of the projects, like the BMS controls, you'll only see at the middle and high schools, because we felt that the elementaries would fit better into an operating budget as opposed to being on the waterfall. So we tried to balance out the projects between operating, waterfall, and long-term, so that we can give you a smoother budget. And tried to be, we, in reality, we were trying to be a good neighbor to the town, and we understand that the town has had some issues with buildings, and they need to start looking at their buildings as well. So we wanted to be able to participate and help out and smooth out our requests as our building, our large projects are wrapping down.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm here. I'm listening. I don't have questions, so my silence is not, I don't want it to be taken any other way. I'm here.
So if I see, if I look at the total cash flow required on bonding on the Board of Ed, where would I see the renovation of Dwight? Because I don't see, and is that in the 2930 vintage? Like, where is that?
I was, I apologize. I was trying to look at my screen, but I'm going to look at the paper instead. One minute to...
I think it's got to be in that area.
I want to say, oh, here, 2526 Dwight Project Edition and Renovation.
Yeah, no, that doesn't pass the smell test here unless you put it in the town side. Is that labeled in the town side, Jared? 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 Hello?
We're on mute, Tom.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no problem.
So it is in, it's not on the town side.
So if it's not on the town side and it's $30 million, and it's in, what did you say, was Angeles in the 2526? Yeah, it's not on the town side. It's not in yours number either, at least on the top schedule, Exhibit 1.
Are you able to scroll back up?
I am, well, you'll have to ask Jared that. I'm on my own screen.
We have this package, right? Like, this isn't, what is on your screen is no different from what I got, I picked up on, well...
On the agenda.
Well, on the agenda, but also the, we have that. Is there any difference? Because it's hard for me to see it on the screen.
If you go, forget, okay, I asked the question, so just let me, just because maybe there's an easy answer. Jared, you go all the way up to your capital plan Exhibit 1, projected cash flow slide. Forget what the Board of Ed has for a minute, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Angeles. I just want to see if I can steer. Go to this. Look in, look in 24 through 27, right? Look at the capital projects at the very top of that, right? 2.5 million, 3.7 million, 9.6 million, 9.3 million. Right? Down below, if you go to the town side, you've got, you know, 16 or 17 million, 27 million, and nothing in 2026. Nowhere in that era do I see $30 million or, you know, $30 million net of reimbursement for Dwight. And I might add, that's the pinch point for WCF, WPCF, too.
If you don't mind, can I jump in for one minute?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah.
I'm looking at, and I think it's a matter of just reading our waterfall, because if you look at 2526, we have the $30 million project on there, but at 2526, it's a $250,000 ask for the seed money. And then if you go out, it's a $7 million ask over the next four years to do the 30 million.
So you're saying it's going to take four years?
Which I don't know why, I apologize. I have to look at why we broke it out four years. I think it was based on the number and getting the allocation. But now that I'm, now that you're saying that, four years seems longer than I originally anticipated doing that before.
Yeah, right. There just seems to be an inconsistency here. And being that it's right in the middle of where we have the pinch point, I would just kind of go back and make sure you're aligned on that.
Okay, I'd be happy to go back with Gerald and Jared and go through it.
Yeah.
So I do, because I do see it in, on what he has on the screen now is the, kind of the pinkish color.
Okay. I know, I know a lot of work went into this on your side to, A, go back and review all the projects, B, come up with updated estimates, C, spread this out and kind of work with the town. So I appreciate that very much. I think we do have some heavy lifting to do in the out years, or else I'm very concerned that we're going to be strapped and some critical projects are going to be in jeopardy in that timeframe.
Absolutely.
I've got nothing further right now. Thank you.
Okay, Nancy, do you have any questions?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay. All righty, we are, thank you, Angeles. We are going to move on to item number six. Non-reoccurring 20-year required Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $4,609 for the cost of certain non-reoccurring capital projects and authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I will second.
And we have Jared again on this item, our DPW Director, John Marsilio, Anthony Calabrese, Bill Hurley, Chief Dennis McCarthy, Deputy Chief Dunn, and Stephanie Coakley, who are on the line to answer any questions. And I think Jared will kick it off by just going over some of the items first.
Sure, just real quickly, what you see before you, if everybody can see the screen, is the list of the items. This went before the Board of Finance for them to hear it last week. And we removed one item from there, which was Jackie Durrell improvements. Other than that, it is, it's the same as it was.
And what's the total come to?
46, $4,609,000.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has any questions about the list overall or any individual projects.
I...
Points on each of the projects should be attached.
Um, I had, I did speak to Mr. Marsilio over the weekend, and Stephanie from the library, sorry, while my phone goes. Maybe I'll put myself on mute for a second.
There's an interesting cellphone ring.
Sorry, I'm the last person with the LAN line, and the drugstore is calling me. Sorry, so I'm still going to go on mute.
All right, well, she's on mute. Just a couple of questions on this. The, I'm seeing a few of these that I'm surprised are on a 10-year bond, or is this 20 years? What is this?
This is 20-year.
20, my, thank you. Okay. Well, then there's a couple that I'm concerned that are on a 20-year. The pumper, can we reasonably assume to get 20 years out of the pumper? And out of the Pine Creek Park Playground, those both seem, as well as the Lake Mohegan Splash Pad. All of those seem like 20 years is a heck of a long time for those.
Chief, would you like to speak to the pumper?
Sure. Mr. Flynn, good afternoon. Dennis McCarthy from the Fire Department. Regarding the pumper, we typically plan for conversion from frontline service to a reserve status between 12 and 15 years. What we are replacing is a 2004 pumper. We're able to get longer life out of this one, which makes it a priority. We keep all of our apparatus in service in one capacity or another for typically 25 years. So clearly, we are getting service life out of it, beyond the 20-year bond period.
Have we found the new, the new equipment has that same useful life? I mean, I know... I mean, I know, you know, they have built-in obsolescence for cars and things like that. How about fire trucks?
So, and you know, I've had the unfortunate experience is in reliability of uh, fire out, out of, then you know, back in the seventies, we had problems with bad steel and a lot of rust. Uh, we've had some environmental conditions, most recently uh, creating some rust in our frames and undercarriages. Uh, however, that said, we are getting very good service life out of the current generation of fire apparatus. Confidence uh, with the maintenance program that we have in the department, we will get the service life out of it, that uh, the bond.
Okay, and um, the other, the other uh, engines that we've uh, acquired recently, trucks, have we done those over twenty years? I cannot recall. Yes, to my knowledge, yes. Okay. How about the plague? Thank you, Chief. How about the playground and the splash pad?
Yep, those will fall under Parks and Recreation. Um, so the splash pad was put in, in uh, the current one was put in nineteen ninety-nine, so that one's lasted twenty-plus years. Uh, lifespan on those is about twenty years and then you typically would replace them. This one's right on schedule to be replaced. Um, the playground, uh, again, you probably need to update it every twenty or so years. This one hasn't been updated in almost forty.
Okay.
So, way past.
What about um, the Doogie LLo softball field lights, different question. Um, there was some talk about them sharing the expense, the soft, cause they had, is this just the town's portion or what's this?
Uh, so what they're looking to do is to take advantage of the town's bonding rates. Uh, so the town, they're asking the town to bond this, um, and then it would, right. So we would treat this just like any of our other uh, field uh, rentals that we do with them, with the league's nap, and we would just send them an invoice every year for the amount due.
Are they, they have the cash available to pay for this?
But from what I understand, from uh, Dennis Nolan, who's uh, part of their league, they have twenty thousand on hand right now that they wanna contribute towards the project. And then they would fundraise and increase fees to pay for the rest of it annually. Uh, but they don't, with their financial background, they don't see this as an issue. Think they're in a position to do that.
Do you see this as an issue? I mean, have they raised this type of money before? I know what they're representing, but once we bond it and it's up, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I just, you know, fiscal prudence says ask the question.
No, I, I don't, I don't see any um, issue with this. Um, that league is a thriving league, even um, these kinds of times that we're in right now. Um, I would say the worst-case scenario that you're looking at is that the league folds. Um, we have another league come in, you know, and then we would just charge them, just like we do to every other that.
Okay.
Would it be possible um, for someone just to speak for the public on the first two items, um, the townwide facility audit plan and, and what that means for the four hundred thousand and the Independence Hall, um, just for explanation, not as questions, but um, and also as I was saying, sorry, my, my landline was interfering. Um, I did have a chance to speak to Mr. Marsilio and Stephanie from the Pequot Library over the weekend and want to thank them both for their time. Um, and in addition to just talking about those first two items, is there any, um, Anthony, do you feel that these numbers, given the historic contaminants and other reasons for some contaminants, do these, are these real numbers? Is there any concern that these items will will be affected by the, the issues I just mentioned, or is this, are these numbers like pretty real and? In the sense of, sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, all three of the projects that I put on here are based off of vendor quote, so these numbers are as real as they get.
Okay. Do you feel like with some of the issues we've had with the historic contaminants or otherwise, as I said, um, you do expect there to be the unexpected, or are these pretty straightforward projects that shouldn't uncover issues?
No, I don't, I don't believe these would uncover any underlying issues. They're very straightforward projects.
Thank you. And then um, under those PW items, if someone could speak.
So Nancy, I'm just gonna jump in on the Independence Hall renovation. This is something that was, um, the, the specs were approved and the design was approved before I came into office, before all of us uh, came in. And this is to renovate the zoning and building department and conservation department areas uh, for better space utilization and workflow. Um, if, you're welcome to come and look at them, uh, they're, they're really inefficient design and extraordinarily hard for them to do their work.
I was just asking so it could be explained for the public, cause no, no, I don't have specific questions. I just think that that's a good distinction because people will look at that and go, huh, what is that? And I just wanted you to have the opportunity, yep.
Right, sure, no problem. So this is something that was approved, like I said uh, before, and this is for the permitting department. So they'll have an opportunity, uh, the space is really poorly laid out and it would allow the conservation department to move over to the zoning area and then free up more space for the building department where they can spread out the plans that they get, which everything is so cramped. I mean, it's, it's really, I don't know how they even get anything done.
No, they need, it's, it needs it sorely.
Yeah, and I'm gonna let uh, Bucky, who's here with me, uh, talk about the townwide facility audit plan.
Okay, so um, just to, just, just to get back to the um, Independence Hall renovation, that was uh, a plan that I reviewed that was done a year and a half ago. And it is, the intent was to make it user-friendly. And uh, uh, we have the plans and we're working on the final budget and the five hundred thousand dollars is the estimate that came from the consulting architect. And we're validating that number as we speak. Secondly, for the townwide facilities audit, uh, one of the deficits that I uh, saw when I arrived was uh, the whole absence of real long-term valid uh, planning efforts. So um, we have today a RST being issued for the roadway audit for a uh, ten-year plan for roads. We have a plan now for a twenty-year uh, vehicle uh, replacement uh, plan. And so the, the last leg of that stool is the, is the uh, the facility audit. So we are presently engaged in working up a budget for uh, an architect to go to every building that we maintain and develop a plan that um, gives us some capital vision, a ten, at least a minimum of a ten-year capital vision of what, what we're going to have to invest in our facilities uh, for the next ten years. So we'll have all these plans done, they'll all be done uh, hopefully before uh, the new budget. And we'll have our hands on a, a solid path forward for all these major capital uh, expenditures that you have to review and approve. And you'll have something in your hand from a third party, uh, not unlike uh, what's being done for recreation. Uh, you'll have all these plans uh, ready for you to uh, to review and accept.
Thank you. How, everything okay with the truck I read about? Kinda maybe a non-subjector, but truck catching fire? Is everyone okay?
Yeah, everything's okay.
Well, it's good you're, it's good you're laughing. That's a good sign.
Well, you know, that, that's not infrequent.
We're not laughing, we're crying.
Well, nobody got hurt.
That's good.
We definitely need some upgrades to our, our fleet, to our equipment, that's for sure.
To go back for a second on what Bucky's saying, I, I have two thoughts. Um, number one, I completely agree with, with what's going on with these plans, the issues Ben. We've taken a very reactive approach and catches and catch can on the town side and we're kind of going towards a more proactive approach on particularly maintenance of our buildings, uh, particularly with the historic nature of some of our buildings like Independence Hall. If we don't get out in front of that, which we are not right now, it could be much more expensive to um, to have to play catch-up, which we may be doing already uh, due to being so reactive on that building. So I think it is very important that we do these studies, we get these plans, and then we appropriately move forward with prioritizing them and addressing them. Um, with the Independence Hall renovation, the one thing I would ask for is I understand we wanna reconfigure those offices and I support making it more uh, customer slash user-friendly. I would ask that we do the audit of the facility first, um, have that up to go before we start that specific renovation. Because I would hate to start doing the renovation and movement of offices only to find that we have structural issues that are caught by the, the facilities review that need to be addressed. Um, otherwise, we could be renovating a place and then having to tear some pieces of it out in order to affect the upgrade of the place. So I think the coordination of that, I would just ask be done so that we're not, um, you know, it's kinda like when we redo a road and then the, the um, water company comes and tears it up uh, and it has to be redone again. And I, I just don't want that to happen as it relates to Independence Hall.
You know, uh, Tom, that's, that is not a problem, not a problem at all. By the time uh, the facility audit is done, um, or the time it would take to do the facility audit, um, I think would permit us to prioritize this building, have them do it first. We can have the report scanned while they went on and continued with all the other twenty buildings that we, we have to take a look at. So I'm happy to do that. That's fine.
Thank you. And, and one other item on this one. I s- I, I seem to recall that when we did the three seventy-five committee for the town, that they had collected a lot of funds. And there was something in the back of my mind about um, them approaching the town and saying, you know, here's all these funds that should be used for historic buildings uh, to make sure that we update them and renovate them and keep them where they, where they should be. Um, I, that was in the back of my mind, and then I actually got contacted this weekend over, over a buddy who's, who's pretty well-informed. And he brought it up independently of me. So I don't know whatever happened to those funds, but I think it was a fair amount of money. And I think that bears some looking into as it relates to Independence Hall and some of these other more historic buildings. Does anybody have any memory of that otherwise? Cause I know we've had a lot of turnover.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, Tom. We're happy to look into it. Uh, you know, just for the record, Independence Hall was built in the seventies, so it's not really historic.
That's true too.
The old, yeah, the Old Town Hall obviously is a whole nother ball of wax that's built very long ago and has some substantial uh, foundation issues as well as, I would imagine, um, uh, ADA and structural issues, and that's the kind of thing. You know, this building is in the seventies, probably similar to most houses that were built in this town. But the Old Town Hall is the one I think we're most concerned about.
You're absolutely right.
Of that, if we ever were to uh, discuss a renovation project of that building, we might wanna take into consideration what the cost would be to doing that because of its age and the amount of work that could be involved as opposed to making, looking, or potentially looking at another uh, avenue for those spaces.
No, you're, thank you, Brenda. You're absolute, you're a hundred percent right. I was, I was mixing the two, cause I was looking at the entire town hall complex. So you're right. So thank you.
Thank you. So, um, uh, I'm just gonna bring up, um, uh, there was some discussion, I think Stephanie might be on the line here with us, but there was some discussion at the Board of Finance meeting regarding the Pequot roof appropriation, and I know it's an unconventional um, appropriation, not one we have typically engaged in in the past. And I just wanna explain a little, um, Stephanie reached out to the town uh, months, months ago to say that there was a a donor in the Southport area family who offered to donate a hundred thousand dollars to the roof project, which they have been raising a significant amount of money to repair, uh, replace and repair. And uh, would only donate the money if the town was willing to match it. So I thought it was an interesting proposal and I thought about it for a little while. And then I decided to uh, put it on the, this, on the done recurring because I thought this was something the town bodies should talk about. It shouldn't just be me either just, you know, saying no to it. But I think it's a, and I, I like the idea actually, because I think that the Pequot Library is unique in a sense that while it is a nonprofit, it is a library that anyone in our town can use. Um, not a specific population, so to speak, but uh, uh, open and available to anyone in our community. And so, and it is beautiful. Um, it, it adds to the character of our town. It is a gorgeous building and I can't even imagine it not being there. So I, I thought it was a unique uh, uh, request and I, I thought it was worthy of the town's um, investment. And so I wanted to have uh, a Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance uh, discuss it. Now, uh, it was brought up to me uh, by Selectman Flynn and some others who thought maybe the town should uh, ask the Pequot Library if we should get something in writing that would say if the Pequot Library, God forbid, ever went under and, and they needed to sell it, that the town would have first right of refusal on the property. So I reached out to Stephanie last week. She did reach out to her board and they, they're interested in the idea. However, it would take a lot more than getting it done really quickly because there's fees and there's a whole host of legal things that would um, have to come into play. So I personally am still very interested in supporting this. I think it's an investment in a, in a building in our town that's important, landmark, and an important asset uh, to our community as well with the library services. So I just wanted to uh, share that information. And now uh, uh, their information is up on the screen if everyone can see it. And I'll open it up for questions and, and Stephanie's also on the line.
I would love to echo because I feel so um, I'm very supportive of this and I think it's a unique opportunity. And I just wanted to throw my support into, into this um, and to express it. Pequot Library is something I used when I was a kid. I think it's a great asset to our town. I think it's an interesting opportunity for us to to look at this partnership and see perhaps it's a, it's a good precedent for other things to come. Um, I do think it's an incredible resource for our town. Um, and I think in concert with the other libraries, with the, the public libraries, it's, we're very lucky to have that as a resource for the community and it has its own unique uh, appeal and, and what it offers for the community and programming. And, and I think Stephanie and Caroline and the team over there do an amazing job and, and just wanted to throw again, um, my passionate support for, for this and, and happy to support this endeavor.
Tom, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Stephanie, thank you for being here today. Um, I too am, am a big supporter for many, many years of the, of the Pequot Library. Um, it fulfills an idle function for that area town and it actually does it at a reasonable price point um, in concert with our, our own public library. So thank you for that. And thank you for all you and your Board of Trustees and your workers do on that. Um, I do think and I appreciate uh, for Selectwoman Kupchak bringing this before the town bodies, because it is an interesting and unique proposal that deserves to be heard. Um, I think uh, my former colleagues on the Board of Finance had questions or concerns on this. Not so much because they don't wanna support Pequot Library, um, but because of the precedent it sets uh, relative to Pequot and its um, its relative value compared to the other. to the other not-for-profits that, that, uh, provide good work in, in service to the town, which is why I approached, uh, the First Selectwoman, uh, as, as well as others within her administration of, you know, quote unquote, "something in return," and why I came up with the thought of, uh, the right of first refusal. Now, God forbid, um, that should ever become necessary, but at least it's a way, um, to show, um, the partnership between the town and Pequot Library, and also firm up our investment, which is really what you're asking for is an investment in your building, um, which we don't do for other not-for-profits, we, we help with our operating budget as we do yours. Um, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about what your board's reaction to the concept was, uh, what next steps are, so I can get a little bit more comfortable with this, because quite honestly, I do want to support it, but I also want to make sure we're not setting a bad precedent and that we're, we're, um, showing this partnership appropriately.
Can I ask an addendum to your question before Stephanie jumps in?
Sure.
Or like a side, back to you, Tom, if I may.
Sure.
We, do you, do you know of any other circumstance where a not-for-profit has come to us with this kind of proposal, where they've had this sort of investment and asked the town to match it at this level?
I do, I do seem to recall, not at this level, but I do seem to recall there's been other not-for-profits in the number of years that I've been involved, that have come before us with some type of need relative to capital. Um, and we've typically been, uh, a little bit suspect of that, I think in, in one or two cases, I think we have done that, uh, to help out individual not-for-profits. Uh, in one instance, I think it was a, a supreme case with their operating budget, um, and another, I, I just, the, the details escaped me. So I don't think it's completely unheard of in my time on the Board of Finance, um, but certainly for this amount, it's unique and certainly that it's completely capital. Uh, and, and I should point out certainly that it's a, a matching contribution to another citizen that they graciously said they would put the amount up, so.
And for me, that's, oh, just an important distinction, because the fact is, they are willing, and I'm, I certainly want to turn this over now to Stephanie to answer that, but for, for me, I just didn't know if, if there was that kind of, uh, situation where someone was willing to match it, and that, and that makes it, you know, for me, different, but, okay, just thanks for letting me in.
Go ahead.
Well, thanks all for inviting Pequot Library to this important discussion, and you all know, I hope, how grateful we are. Mr. Flynn, to answer your question specifically about the board's reaction, I have some more work to do, honestly. Uh, I've had, uh, not enough conversations, I need to go to more board members, the full board, some of our major patrons and, and friends of the library. And so I, as I've mentioned, Selectwoman Kupchak the other day, it would be much appreciated if we had a little bit more time to explore this idea, which we are, I want to emphasize, so appreciative of your, uh, consideration and, and coming up with this idea. It's just that we, we need to look over some of our historical documents, talk about it as a board, a larger group, and I could very well have, uh, and also our attorneys, I could very well have a bit of a MOA or some kind of written understanding between the two partners, which we very much believe we are.
Right.
In a week's time.
Okay, and when does the Board of Finance, uh, vote on this? Is that tomorrow night?
Uh, I believe it's the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, possibly, it may possibly get moved, uh, to the second.
To the second of, to the second of March?
Yeah, but right now it's scheduled for the sixteenth.
And when's our next meeting?
The twenty-second.
Okay, and they might not see it to the first of March? Okay. Okay, I think, you know, just based on the tone and tenor of their conversation, I think they want to approve it too. I can't speak for any of them. I just think it's the, and I don't think it has anything to do with Pequot Library, it's, it's kind of the fairness and the ability to, to say, this is different, as opposed to everybody then coming and wanting more, if, if you can understand, Stephanie.
Absolutely understand.
Well, I, I think each one, Tom, you know, I think anyone can come, I don't see a rush of people, you know, saying they're gonna donate a hundred thousand dollars to various organizations, um, but I think that regardless, we always have the opportunity to review it and decide, uh, based on the merits. Uh, I, you know, so I, I, that to me doesn't bother me, because we always have the ultimate decision about if we want to do it or not, or if we think it's worthy. Um, are, are you, are you suggesting we not vote on this item?
Well, I, I don't want to cart, I mean, do we have to vote? What's the implication if we hold off for a vote on the entirety of this bond pending a piece of information that we're gonna have in two weeks? I mean, does that do anything? I mean, do we have anything? Are we shovel-ready with anything that if we, if we move this forward?
This item in itself, Tom, the whole item, are you suggesting?
I'm saying the whole 20-year bonding. Is there any implication to push this off instead of carving this specifically out, uh, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars, taking the whole bonding item of 4.6 million and saying, let's put it date certain on our agenda? Uh, is February 22nd enough?
No, not the, uh, agenda. Um, I want to look at the item.
Look at all the items.
Yeah. So Bill Hurley, you're on this call. Can you, um, I mean, the bridges, the roads, this BlackRock design?
Is there anything that gets delayed, Bill?
Well, um, my understanding is the, uh, RTM wasn't gonna really vote on this until the end of March, so I don't think.
Right.
A couple of weeks make a difference.
So I.
Okay, I didn't know that. Uh, cause I know that the Board of Finance was really pushing to vote on this early, and that's why we were trying to do this special meeting. I wasn't aware of that they were gonna wait for March.
Well, the RTM is. I mean, I understand that the Board of Finance typically likes to get this done before they get all wrapped up in the overall budget process, but this could be a key piece of information that maybe it helps the other town bodies get behind this, that's my only thought. It gives it a.
If I don't hear any, um, from anyone on the call whose projects are on this list, including our DPW Director, I'm happy to wait a little bit if that helps.
Yeah.
Is there anyone object to that, whose projects are on the list?
So we're talking about waiting 10 days?
10 days, Tom?
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to, I, I mean, it's, it's basically, it's enough, it's a big nothing burger to Bill Hurley's, uh, point, because it doesn't go anywhere until the RTM approves it anyway. So they're not gonna approve it if they don't take it up to the end of March. It doesn't, this affects absolutely nothing, from what I understand.
Right, but I think, I think the protocol, and I could be wrong, is that we have to vote on it before the Board of Finance?
Without a doubt. The only thing it does to them is it says, Jim, you talked about pushing it to your March 1st meeting, push it to your March 1st meeting.
Well, I don't want to dictate to, to Jim what he's doing, um.
No, absolutely, but quite frankly, if we don't pass it today, he's got nothing on his agenda to move forward anyway. Do you know what I mean?
Well, he has the other items, but, um.
Yeah. I mean, Jared, do you think this?
I'm happy to vote for this now and wait for the, uh, information that Stephanie's gonna try to get us, uh, before the Pequa, uh, before it comes before the RTM or even the Board of Finance. And then, um, because either way, I actually support it. So I, I just don't want to hold this up and have it become an issue.
Could we make a motion that says just that, Brenda, that we vote yes, or that we're vote on it pending this information with that one caveat?
I'm fine with that.
Well, the town attorney, uh, huh, he's not on the line.
Well, Mr. Sastrom's on the line, and he's been, he knows we've done this previously. I don't want to speak for him, but isn't that correct, Mr. Sastrom?
Yeah, so you're suggesting that you're gonna approve the bond resolution?
Oh, Jim Baldwin is on the line, I'm sorry.
Just contention of that information, contention on that information.
The only problem is, if it comes back as a no on that information, it immediately stops in its track and doesn't go to the Board of Finance. Whereas if we hold this whole item, um, of the 4.6 million, they can take it up as soon as we get the information.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Sastrom?
Yeah, if I may, it's not, it's not, I, I guess, I guess it's not just really the, I mean, you're gonna need the information, but it's not just really the information. I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple of you say that you would support this no matter what, hearing perhaps another saying that we probably should have an agreement in place. I did sit through the Board of Finance meeting the other night, and there were obviously, as you all know, some serious reservations about this, only because of the precedent setting. And so I, I honestly think you might be better off sorting this out before you vote on it and before you send a recommendation along, because I'm concerned that otherwise it's not, it's not gonna be clear to the Board of Finance what really is before them. Is it, uh, an approval? Is it a conditional approval? Are you leaving the approval up to them?
Right.
Which you don't normally do. You normally say, this is the way it should be.
So if, if pushing, you know, the, the 10 days to our next meeting, well, or the meeting after, doesn't throw the whole thing into, I'm happy to support, to support that.
And I think this gets a better chance of it getting approved at the Board of Finance level, and I think that's what Mr. Sastrom's saying as well, that, that, you know, the reservations have already been recommended, this is a way to, uh, address those reservations and send it along to them that might actually get it approved, otherwise, who knows? I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Sastrom.
No, no, but I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure, many of you know that Jared and I, that we're there until quarter of, quarter of 12 last, uh, last Tuesday night, uh, with the Board of Finance, and this is an item that they did spend a lot of time discussing. I think that you might be able to sort out a lot of the issues for them by resolving this, but if you don't, but, but I think you're probably the ones who want to resolve it first before you sort of kick the can down the road, is be, I, I think, I think the process will be cleaner that way.
That's what I think as well.
I don't know what Mr., I don't know what, I don't know what Attorney Baldwin thinks, but.
Hi, this is a, this is Jim Baldwin. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, uh, I agree with, with Attorney Sastrom, but I'll also remind you that everyone here is a, uh, ex officio member of the Board of Finance, and if the information comes to you presumably in time for the Board of Finance meeting, it can be, uh, kind of resolved and presented at that time based on whatever the information is. So it's just another, another way to do it, but, uh, there's no wrong way to do it, those options both exist.
So I would just say, um, listen, I, I'm fine with either or, but I also feel that, and, and ask this, Mr. Sastrom, say for example, we vote on this and we say, with these are, it's not like the Board of Finance lives in another country, you know, we talk to these people every day, and so we could say, we approved it, and we were hoping that we'd be able to get this, this right of first refusal, uh, to, you know, on the books before you get it, and if they feel really uncomfortable, they could always, and this is to you, would they be able to remove the one item from the list if they felt uncomfortable with that one list, item?
They can actually remove the one, they could at their meet, next meeting, if they could remove that one item from the list, um, uh, and they could actually send it back to you for further action. So you could, you could also move, you could also move it in that way. I mean, what I'm understanding, the timeframe to be here is, we need to be, we need to have this all resolved before the RTM meeting at the end of March. So I think you could do that either way. I, I would actually be more comfortable if you had an unconditional resolution that passed it along to them, with the understanding that, that if this isn't resolved at the Board of Finance, they may not approve it and they may send it back to you. I think that might be the best option.
Try to resolve it, is what, is what you're saying.
Exact, exactly, but if you moved it along to them as an approval, um, uh, Mr. Flynn, then with, then with the, you're, uh, the First Selectwoman is right, it's not like they live in another country. Um, sometimes they're in a different time zone at night, but that's a different issue. The, um, I think that, I, I think if you, uh, but if you sent it along to them with the understanding, you're gonna work with them to try to work it out at their meeting, and if it doesn't get worked out, it gets bounced back to you. I think that's, I think that's probably a good solution.
Here's my problem with it getting bounced back, I want it as part of the bigger bonding, I don't think you want another vote on this separately.
Well, if, but if it did get worked out in time for the Board of Finance, then it wouldn't get bounced back, they could just move the whole package along and you wouldn't be facing.
Correct, exactly right, exactly right.
So that's why the best option may be to move it to them and kick the ball with them understanding what they, what they've gotta do.
See, I, I disagree, cause if they kick it back to us, I think the best option is to hold the whole package, is what I'm saying, and then have it go as part of the entire package. Because what happens if it doesn't get resolved? It gets kicked back to us, the rest of the package moves forward, this item then becomes a standalone item, and then goes through the entire process again on its own.
That's true, that's true, that's, that is also cumbersome, you're right.
If it doesn't change anything, I would hold this entire package and send it to them as soon as we have the answer. That's what I would say.
Stephanie, can you, um, I mean, I, I, it's kind of putting you on the spot, and I don't mean to do it, um, cause again, I'd vote, I would vote for it regardless, um, how long do you think you're gonna, it would, might take you, I mean, did an attorney for the board give any information or indication if this was a big deal for you to get, or if this wasn't such a long, hard thing to get?
It's, it's not certainly a big deal. We can have an answer by the end of the business week, sure, if sooner.
That's probably.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, because we haven't talked since Friday, so that's, that's good to hear. I just didn't want to hold everything up and then you have to say to us that, you know, it's gonna be a couple of weeks or a month or?
No, in fact, I, I learned a great deal more since we spoke Friday, just today, and all I, I have to do is, is get my folks, uh, around an email or a video call in the next few days. This is a really important matter, obviously, and I, I certainly, uh, again, appreciate your consideration, so we'll get back to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thank you, Stephanie, yep. So, uh, Tom, if that makes you feel comfortable and you think that's a better way to go, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I think it works either way, but I'm happy to hold it. Um, when is our next meeting?
The 22nd, at least that's what somebody told us, yeah.
Okay.
So, can we go on and ask any more?
Want to make a motion, want to make a motion to, um, hold this item, to, um, postpone this item to a date certain, February 22nd?
Yes, I'm happy to make that motion. Can I ask though, if there's any other questions? I don't want to cut Nancy off. If she has any other questions on any item related to this resolution, um, happy to sit here and listen to those questions before we move on, so that when it comes back to us on the 22nd, we can just vote and not take a whole bunch of time.
I don't, if something comes up now that we are waiting, I'll certainly ask, find and make phone calls, but for now, I'm totally done and was prepared to vote, but appreciate delay, the pause to, to, to find out more.
Then, then madam, First Selectwoman, I will make the motion to delay, uh, action on the item, um, the 20-year bonding resolution, item number six on our agenda for $4,609,000, uh, until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is February 22nd.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie.
Stephanie, I want to say thank you for your work and, and thank you to your board for the consideration on this item. I think it'll go a long way towards helping with the other town bodies as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for all you guys do.
Thanks all.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna move on to item number seven, um, the Chief Fiscal Officer, this requires, uh, Board of Finance and RTM approval to here consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled the resolution appropriating $3,920,000 for the purchase of vehicles and equipment for the Department of Public Works and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you, okay, so, uh, Jared is bringing up some documents now on here. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, Jared is bringing up some documents now on here and we have our DPW director, John Marsilio, and our chief financial officer to answer any questions. Uh, Bucky, do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Are these, these are the same projects we just discussed, correct?
These are the vehicle replacement.
Vehicle replacement.
Okay, so, um, in our, uh, discussion in our workshop a number of, uh, weeks ago, uh, we had a, uh, a program for this year that was, uh, more expansive than the one we're presently asking for. Tom thought it would be a good idea to kind of, uh, you know, blend the, the requests over a few more years. And to do a more robust, uh, uh, plan, uh, out to five and perhaps 10 years. So I can tell you that we've worked very, very hard to get this done. I've had to work with, uh, with Jeff, the fleet, uh, manager. And we've, of course, had a lot of interruptions because of, uh, the weather events that we've had in the past two weeks. So, uh, I think we're a day away from having, uh, the complete request for the five-year plan. And, uh, a, what I feel would be a relatively confident look forward for, uh, a total of 10 years. So, um, as we had discussions with, um, the Board of Finance, uh, with, uh, Mr. Walsh and, and the chairman, uh, they felt that it would be, uh, a good policy to incorporate three, the three years of requests in a bond package and, uh, to, uh, bond or fund, uh, the requests, uh, in three discrete periods over the next three years. So what this request represents is, uh, the next three years of, uh, of equipment, uh, needs. I don't know. Is that clear? I, I, I think I, I think I, uh, described it as best I can.
Yeah. So the funding mechanism is to, Jared, would you be, how would you manage the bonding of this item? Would you do it in three separate tranches or is it one tranche?
No, so we would, you guys, you guys would authorize for up to three years. We would do it in three se- separate tranches each year based on, you know, gives us a little flexibility depending on, uh, you know, what Mr. Marsilio is dealing with and which purchases he wants to make. So, uh, by doing one tranche each of the three years, it, uh, you know, allows us to be more flexible and, uh, meet his needs.
Well, what I was thinking was if you did it, look, we don't know what's going to happen with interest rates. Um, I don't think they're going down. They're most assuredly either going to stay the same or go up. And so this would allow you to bond more at lower interest rates if need be. The reason I said break it out over three years, what I don't want to have happen on the back end of this is when these trucks all become available again, it's like the roofs. Right? Oh my God, we've got $5 million worth of trucks that are all 20 years old in 2040. Right? We don't want to have that. We want to have, you know, a steady stream over a number of years as opposed to have to get hit with this again. That's what I'm trying to do and why I said buy them over a consecutive year period. You probably have to do that anyway to take delivery. I don't know. Um, but at least you would spread out the obsolescence of these trucks later on, if you see what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah. And that, that's, yeah, I, maybe I misspoke. That's, that's what we were talking about doing, that we would do, we would issue the bonds in three separate tranches. You got, you would authorize for three years, but we would issue them. Uh, you know, first year we would do X amount and the second year do another amount third year.
Mm-hmm.
So Tom, you, you're, you're, you're.
Go ahead.
I think the same way that I am, you know, you do not want to buy, uh, 10 trucks year one because you're right, they all turn 20 years old on the same day.
Right.
Uh, the, the, uh, the idea is for these snowplow-related trucks to be, uh, to purchase four this year, three next year, two the following year. And then probably one every year, uh, wherever you want to fund them in order to maintain, uh, uh, prudent, uh, age of the, uh, of the group of trucks overall. So yeah, that's exactly how we planned it. And that's how it appears in the, uh, in the bond package.
And Bucky, this was, um, I mean, just to, just to be clear, I think you had mentioned, I don't remember what meeting it was. But I think you had mentioned that one of your frustrations with the last couple of snowstorms, particularly the big one, is I think you said, and I just want to get clarification, that every truck you had on the road actually had some type of mechanical issue during those storms, right? So it's impacting your ability to clean up the snow and to keep the roads clear. Is that, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I thought that's what you told us though.
Yeah, that's entirely accurate. I mean, just last night or yesterday afternoon, trucks were coming in for little nitpicking items that just had, take a truck off the road, whether it be a hydraulic hose or a water hose or, or some small item and you lose a truck for three hours. And it's all because of the age of the vehicles. So, yeah, I agree with you, uh, that, uh, you, the fleet has to be updated for, for the safety of the drivers and for the safety of the town. I, I've said this many times, you've heard me. Uh, and, and on, at your behest, uh, we blended the, the requests over a few years. It was, it, it's, it's fine with me to do it that way. The lead times on these vehicles are seven to nine months. So, uh, as soon as, uh, uh, you know, one group of trucks are in, we're going to begin to get ready to buy the next group. So this makes it a lot easier for Jared. It, it permits us to plan, uh, uh, smartly and, uh, um, I think it's a good plan.
Great. Thank you.
And as I meant, I was just going to say, we, we had a chance to connect over the weekend, um, although I don't know you as Bucky, Mr. Marsilio. Um, we did have a chance to connect over the weekend, so I don't have any questions here today. You've explained it well and I've read all the material.
Well, I appreciate you doing that, Nancy. Um, that, that's kind of you to do that due diligence, um, you know, on the off time. So our meetings are, are, you know, moving a little bit more, uh, productively. So I really do appreciate. Thank you. All right. If there's no further questions on the item, uh, number seven, do I have, uh, well, it's, we already have our motions on the, uh, table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number eight. To hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled the resolution appropriating $1 million for costs related to road paving and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such approchi- appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Uh, opening up for questions.
So this was the item that was approved in last year's budget, correct?
That's, that's our understanding. Neither Mr. Marsilio nor I was there, but yes, that's our understanding that there was a million put into operating and a commitment to do a million in, uh, in bonding.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. I was here sadly for all of this. So yes, I do recall that and I have no questions on this item. Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Only, and it's not specific to this item, but maybe it's, it's more broad. Um, so if it's not appropriate here with the, um, with the vote that we had, uh, to look at the policies and procedures document, is any of what is being looked at potentially impacting how we vote today? I mean, I, I know, I mean, I support this and I will have my vote, but is there anything that we, that may be revealed in that study or in that audit or anything that that does directly?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the policy?
Yeah, all of that. Is there any connection here that I'm not understanding? That they're being looked at in that policy and procedures guideline in that?
Yeah, um, so I can tell, I can simplify this. Uh, all of the, uh, and specific to the paving, all of those, uh, operations specific to paving will be adopted from the Department of Administrative Services, uh, of the State of Connecticut bid process. So, uh, in paving, uh, particularly, it's, it's pretty, pretty easy to adhere to, uh, uh, the same policies and procedures that the state has, which we're permitted to adopt. So, uh, in, in that instance, and, and by the way, for, uh, um, a great many of the, uh, uh, heavy equipment items and the non-recurring, uh, uh, capital that you just voted on, the same is true. Those are all vehicles that are used by the state. Most of them are used by the state and we can just, uh, uh, adopt and piggyback on, on their process of procurement. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure.
It, it does. And I, it's, it's good because I can dive in further when it's not related specific to this item. So that, thank you.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further questions, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, uh, does somebody want to make a motion? Um, Nancy?
Yes, to, um, I just don't have the lang, exact language right in front of me. I was going to pull it, but I can, I'd like to wave the.
Wave the reading.
Wave the reading. I'm just pulling it up.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So this item is, uh, just a lease agreement, uh, regarding the Giant Steps property. And so I'm just going to hand it over to Attorney Baldwin. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone again, uh, Jim Baldwin. Uh, this is, uh, just finalizing the, uh, closing documents on the property of 9 Barberry Road, uh, the former Giant Steps property. Uh, it's closing tomorrow at 3 o'clock. And technically the contract was not before the RTM. And, uh, that the purchase and sale agreement is in the backup documents and that, uh, is set to close tomorrow, as I said, along with the, uh, the financial, uh, statements that account for the, uh, the balance due to close, that town will be issuing pursuant to the bond resolution, which was previously authorized by this body, the Board of Finance and the Board of, the, uh, RTM. Um, I will also add that the, um, the sale agreement, uh, stipulated that the town would, uh, resolve tax appeal taken by property owners. And that, uh, that stipulation has since been, uh, ordered, approved by the court. So that, uh, that's all set to go. There, there are no contingencies therefore associated with closing tomorrow. So I would, I would ask that you, uh, you approve the, uh, the motion before you and, and, uh, make a motion to approve this, uh, item and, uh, and we can proceed with the closing of the property tomorrow.
All right. Is there any questions to Attorney Baldwin? Hearing none?
Jim, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Uh, Jim, there's nothing in this agreement that is not basically, uh, in accordance with everything we've already approved. Is that correct?
That is 100% correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10. To hear, to consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the town attorney and tax collector in the amount of $42,707.59 contingent on court approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And I believe, uh, item number 11, make a motion, uh, we have to postpone this, uh, item uh, to the February 22nd, 2021 meeting when Attorney Aiken will be able to discuss the item then. You remember?
Got it.
Do I have a motion to postpone?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion as stated just now, February 22nd, date certain.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, motion to, uh, adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good night.
You too.